I'd like to call to order the City of Sagatuck City Council Workshop for May 7, 2025. Jamie, will you call the role?
Anderson, here.
Clark.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Muncie.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Stanton.
Here.
We have a quorum. Speaking of which, three of us need to leave. I will be the third to leave at six. We'll still have a quorum if we have to go back that, you know, beyond that, but hopefully, I don't think we need, this is a lone meeting, so. But Lauren needs to leave and Scott's got a wildlife committee meeting, so. Any agenda changes? All right. That brings us, first of all, welcome Spear Street neighbors. Great to have you all here and to those online. We're at the first public comment related only to agenda items, so if anyone would like to make a comment, you can come to the podium. Now's the time.
Hello, everybody. I'm Ann Sheridan. I know most of you. And I appreciate your time here today talking about our street light. It's certainly not the biggest issue we'll face this year. But we started this conversation about six months ago with Scott. And I think his report covered the events that happened since then, and we're just crawling right along, but the bottom line is, we'd like to darken our end of the street the way it's used to be, because we had, I don't know, according to Jim, who's been here in the longest, probably about thirty years of inoperable street light that we really enjoyed. But I just, you know, wanted to be here in person and let you guys know that, you know, we do really feel strongly about trying to make this happen and thank you for considering it. I don't think it's going to be a nuisance for anybody. The neighbor that turned in the request to turn it back on. I talked to Lynn and she, she knows about the meeting. She's, she didn't come, but I don't think she's too worried about it. I won't speak for her. Hopefully you guys could get a comment from them at some point. But that's about all I had to add.
Right.
It would be really great to remove it. That would be my preference.
Okay.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. And congrats to our two parents of high school graduates.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Nancy Kimball, 550 Spear Street. And of course, I'm speaking about the light as well today. I live across the street from the light and also one house down, but even still, it impacts my property. So when I look out the front windows, I can see that light. So it's almost like, it feels like it's like stadium lighting or something, you know, just for, instead of a normal street light. And so I also wanted to mention that while it's obviously impacts all our homes and that's, you know, been the primary problem, it's also a problem for wildlife. You know, we live right next to the Peterson Preserve, so we are so fortunate. It's very tranquil. We have a lot of wildlife. And I think most of you are aware that artificial light at night is really bad and harmful for wildlife. So not only does it bother owls, bats, but my personal favorite, lightning bugs. So I just thought I would mention that they are impacted negatively, you know, lightning bugs are in decline. And part of the reason is because of artificial light that interferes with their mating signals. So anything we could do, basically, you know, to reduce that and help give them another chance, you know, is just one more factor to consider. And also, I just wanted to mention that I think communities all over the country are recognizing the negative effects of artificial light. You know, there's a whole dark sky movement. A lot of communities have started to implement different measures and ordinances to help reduce artificial lighting or the impact on the sky. Most of us would love to go outside, look up and see the Milky Way, you know? And obviously, I haven't seen the Milky Way except once in my life when I was in the Grand Canyon. So anyway, I just think it'd be something that it would be good for council to consider even more broadly than just Spear Street. Certainly, I want the light to be addressed as quickly as possible, but, excuse me. I kind of figure you're probably aware, but you know, Sagatuck Township just passed a lighting ordinance. And their goal basically was to try to conform with the Dark Sky Five Principles to try to, you know, lessen the impact on nature and that type of thing, so.
Anyone else?
I'm Jim Selman, reside at 555 Spear Street. As Dan mentioned, I've been there almost thirty years and there has not been a light that's operated there for thirty years that I've been there. And there has not been a single vehicular or pedestrian incident as a result of the darkness. We are dead-end street on both ends and the vehicular traffic tends to be people that live there. If we're not a thoroughfare, we don't have a lot of traffic in the summertime. People, we have a lot of pedestrians during the day who are tourists or out for a walk, but that's about it. The, you know, and I appreciate Scott's comments about safety issues, which are probably standard for most municipalities across the country for streetlights. And while it's true there is a pedestrian walkway that happens to run through my property and the adjacent one behind, I'm, I'm not in favor of any signage for that indicating that there is a pedestrian walkway there. The people that do use it are there during the day. And there are no sidewalks anywhere, so people do have to walk in the road. So I wouldn't see the logic in putting a sign that said, there's a pedestrian walkway on this, this yard when everyone walks in the street to begin with. So, you know, I second exactly what Nancy said about the environmental impacts. And the fact that the light does shine all the way back into my bedroom. From the proximity where it is and the way my house is situated, very open on the inside, it it does illuminate the entire house. So I would be in favor of the removal of the light as well.
Good afternoon. Jim Bock, 638 Spear. That light is directly in front of my house. It lights up the whole front of my house. I asked them to put up a shield when the first light went up, which would have lit the Tiger Stadium all by itself. This one's lower wattage, but it still lights up the house. They did not put a shield up there, even though Scott approved it. Thank you very much. And I second everything that everybody said. This, our street is unique. People don't park there. We don't have tourist parking there. The walkway that Jim talked about, yes, it's there, but if you bring it to people's attention, you're going to have a lot of unhappy people because the water table up there is so high frequently, it's waiting. So it's not, it's not used very much. So there's a twenty-year history, thirty years, twenty that I know of, with no accidents, no issues. The snowplows have plowed, the trash people have come, the police have never said, we need a street light here. So thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
All right. Hi, I'm Karen Sheridan and I live at 655 Spear Street and our house was built in eighteen, at least. And as Jim Selman shared with me, when he first, when David first moved in, the street didn't even go to our house. It was a two-track to our driveway, which was also gravel. And so with that said, we sit very close to the street and be, because there wasn't one. And then when houses started to be built, then they put the street in. It just so happens, you know, we've had to grandfather, we've been grandfathered, have had to get special permits for everything we've done, right? Basically. So with that said, because we sit so far too, close to the street, that street light basically lights up my whole front of the house and my living room. The bedroom's upstairs and and even with curtains, it still lights up and the bedrooms upstairs. And the thing is, you know, we just got air conditioning only, what, eight years ago, I think? And so we rely on our whole house fan, which means I can't have curtains or shades because I need that air coming through, right? Well, I can't do that with the light because then my bedroom's all lit up. And which brings me to the health of not only human beings, because it disrupts our circadian rhythm, but also wildlife as well. And we finally got owls back last summer. And it's just heartbreaking to think that that light will deter that wildlife coming back because of all the construction going on. Maple, we're getting a lot of wildlife coming into our neighborhood now, which, you know, the deer, yeah, we could be done with. But we only had a coyote two years ago. But I'm just saying that we need to find a way to live with this wildlife and, you know, even looking for bees, they're just, that I think the light, although, you know, they say there are safety reasons, that's still up in the air. That's something to debate because they say yes. But it might deter crime, but not enough because it creates shadows. And where the light does. And, you know, even the simple act of opening my curtains to let the moon shine in this way, I know that sounds so simple and cheesy, but I, I can't because the light shines it. So I think we just, we would just like the light. We would just like it at least turned off, but ideally taped it down.
Thanks, Karen.
Thanks, Karen.
Mark, you want to say anything?
No.
Okay. Anyone on Zoom? Laura, do you want to speak now?
Hi, yeah, I guess I'm, I want to make a comment, I guess, on item sixty. We're the ones that have applied for the street closure. And I'm here in case there's any questions, but we've basically applied for it. We are hosting a wedding. All of the activities will be on our property. None will spill onto city property, but we do have, it's kind of an unusual wedding. It's a wedding, but we're also having like an inflatable slide and some activities that will take place outside of the wedding tent. And we do have seventeen between elementary and middle schoolers, our kids, coming. And we're just concerned about any limited traffic that might be coming down the street because they will be running around the property and just making sure that everyone stays safe and has space. We have rented the house across the street. It's a short-term rental that we are using for guests. Our neighbors to the, oh gosh, I'm sorry, I'm directionally challenged, toward the high school have driveway access off of Elizabeth. Our other neighbor is coming to the wedding. So I don't know that it would be a lot of disruption. And I don't know if there's any questions. I might, some will be discussing it when the agenda item comes up. So I will hang out to see if you have any further questions. Thank you for considering it. And that's it.
Thanks.
Thanks, Laura.
Thanks.
Anyone else online who can have anything? All right, close the public comment, which takes us to approval of the minutes, which are on page two. Someone like to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular city council meeting minutes from April 28, 2025.
I'll second.
Okay, it's a voice of Chris.
If you turn to page six, it says Mayor Anderson expressed gratitude, and then there's two. He acknowledged the closure of the Methodist Church and he closed by congratulating city manager.
I am expansive in my pronouns, so I was fine with, with, you know what, actually, I, that was fine. But happy to have it changed or change it today, but.
I could change that for you.
Okay.
Thanks, Jamie.
Anything else? All right, all in favor, say yes. Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Takes us to discussion, item six A, the street light removal request on Spear Street. Scott, you want to tee it up for us?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for joining us today. I, I've gotten to know quite a few of the Spear Street residents and it's a tight-knit group up there, but. So back in October, you know, they've been really patient. This started way back in October, the late October, when, you know, apparently one of the residents in the area called Consumers Energy and notified them of a street light outage. And then once consumers came out and actually fixed it, that's when I, I got involved pretty quickly after that. So I started hearing from a lot of the residents in the area expressing similar concerns to what you heard today. And it, it, you know, that, that was the first street light removal request that, that I've had at the city. And so then it kind of became a question of, well, why are the streetlights where they are right now? Who decided that? And what, it took a little bit of time and kind of some homework to figure out how they got established. And so what I, what I have since learned is that this was something that the city has ordered at one point or another to have Consumers Energy come out and install the streetlights, so. So the light, light was non-operational for a number of years, and so when it, there was, you know, there were some dialogues that there was some informal agreements among neighbors to kind of keep it, keep it off, because that was the preferred way. But when consumers came out, they upgraded it. They upgraded it with modern LED lighting, which is significantly brighter than the, the old halogen bulbs that, that used to exist, so. So taking all that into consideration, it seemed like the overall, without sending out a survey to the community or in that area, but, you know, I got some feedback that were for the light and it seemed like overwhelmingly people were against it. And so for that reason, I was like, well, okay, is there a way we can come up with some sort of a compromise that might be a win for everybody? So explored the option of getting a shroud for it. So I went through Consumers Energy's shroud catalog, picked the cul-de-sac style, which seemed to direct the light more of a downward angle towards the street. And so I ordered it and kind of going slow and seeing if that might reduce the light and help out. They, they never installed it, unfortunately, but. So I also, in my conversations with consumers, wanted to confirm that it was the lowest wattage available, thinking that we could just swap out the light bulb for something dimmer. That also wasn't true. This is the lowest wattage that they've got, and it is, like I said, significantly brighter. So getting the feedback from the residents in the area, but also wanting to take into consideration some of the traffic concerns, I mean, there was a reason that the street light was, was put there. John Fleeson, Van der Brink and I had some dialogue about, you know, streetlights, it is fairly common to have a street light towards the dead end of a street. This is where, you know, snowplow drivers, mail haulers, you know, service delivery vehicles, you know, they, they would use that to turn around. Even if it's at a, you know, a pretty slow pace, it's still an area that's used, so. For that reason, and then that possibly the pedestrian walkway, I think years ago, there, there were maybe some, some kids that I remember, when I went to Sagatuck Public Schools, they would cut through and go to school there. But I, I don't believe that there's any school kids that use that path anymore. If, if there are, there are not many, so. You know, engineering, we just kind of discussed like, okay, if we did take the street light away, what are some of the things that we could do to mitigate some of the traffic safety concerns and some of your basic stuff? Like there's a no outlet signs at the intersection at Grand and Spear. We could upgrade that with some modern reflectivity signage, possibly add a, you know, some dead-end signs in the area. We discussed a little bit about having some sort of pedestrian signs near the, the walking easement that exists, but, you know, that's probably overkill for the area. And then if we wanted to go full-blown, you know, street regulation on this, and the Federal Highway Administration would have some specs that we could go with, that's really not practical. It would illuminate the area more than it is today, so it's probably not practical for the area that, that exists up there. So taking all those into considerations and not having some sort of a policy for staff to make the decision on this, we wanted to present it to council and, and get your feedback and see what, if there's a direction that you'd like to go in.
Thanks, Scott. Questions? Actually, before we get to questions, Jake, I see you're online. Do you have any perspective you want to provide as we deliberate this?
Nothing, nothing to add. I mean, I think Scott has really offered you a well thought-out presentation of this. Neither of the options that are in front of the council are particularly concerning to me.
Okay. Questions, thoughts?
Chris? Boy, this is a tough one, because when you, once you get into safety issues, whether they might or might not happen, as that is our first responsibility, is looking at safety, but. So I, I guess the question maybe is for, I don't know, you'll have the answers. Is, has everybody on the street been contacted and they're all in support of this?
No, it has not been surveyed.
Okay. Consumers Energy, are they okay with this?
Yeah, they're indifferent either way. They, they basically take direction from the city on this. If we call them and say, remove it, they'll do it. And, but they take direction from us on this.
One of my concerns is this be setting a precedent for other streets, and this street is Spear is so unique. I can understand all of that. I, I could maybe be swayed to turning it off, but I, I'd be a little hesitant to take it out. That would be my issue right there. Just safety aside and, and the fact that not everybody's been told about this and we've got a full hundred percent agreement. And also, we were going to put a shroud up and that didn't happen. There just seems some questions out there that might give me better, better feelings about it.
Others?
Well, I, I you know, echo Council Peterson. I mean, safety is our, should be our number one priority. Having said that, you know, we have a neighborhood here of residents. You know, they live here. It's their town. I think they tell us what they want and, you know, we should do what we can to accommodate them. You know, my, my, my gut is telling me that, you know, unless we hear opposition from others in the neighborhood, I, I, I support this, you know, going forward. In fact, I'd say over the last two years, you know, I've, I've heard several residents up on the hill approach me, approached me with similar concerns about, you know, the lights, and I don't know if it's a manifestation of these new LED lights being so bright or whatever, but, you know, hearing, you know, my gosh, can't you, can't you tone these things down? Or, you know, what happened to the earlier days when you could actually see stars and light pollution and as well as, you know, you know, what, the impact it has on wildlife? So, you know, I think I would like to take this to, you know, a broader discussion. I think that was a great recommendation by Nancy at some point in time. I don't know that we need to do it now, but, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I, I would support the neighborhood and their wishes and I say, you know, turn it off or take it down, whatever, whatever's easiest. That's just my own view based on what I'm hearing, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Clark. I could support either removal or turning it off. I keep thinking back to, I think it was 2021. We actually had a presentation for this council from the Dark Sky Group and was it 23? Oh, you were here for it, Jamie? Okay. I couldn't find his, yeah, I couldn't find it in our meeting agendas. I tried to find it because obviously we all consider safety as paramount here. But that gentleman, I can't remember his name, his presentation really changed my thinking about nighttime lighting and what, and what, you know, what the safety risks are. And in fact, he, based on what he told us, you know, there really was very little to be concerned about from a safety standpoint, which, which was an eye-opener for me in his presentation. And he did touch on a number of the things that, that some of the folks here this afternoon have mentioned, things like wildlife, things like people's health. So there was a really compelling argument, and I would love to see whoever that was come back and, and update us on what they've seen. Because this is something that a number of, you know, once again, we're not unique in grappling with an issue like this. A lot of communities are. And then when you hold this against our, you know, our, our plan, our tri-community master plan to maintain a kind of rural, small-town quality, you know, it makes you think, you know, high voltage, or not high voltage, but high output or high efficiency LED lamps, you know, may not fit that completely. So in this case, I'm, I'm very open to removal or turning it off. But I, like Joe, I would like a more broad discussion and I would love to see the, the Dark Sky gentleman come back or whoever represents that group to just educate us at another workshop.
Yeah, I, I don't really need to say much more. You guys have covered it. But I, I do agree, we should listen to our residents in that neighborhood. I also feel like turning it off, leaving the lamp there in case something changes in the future. But we can, you know, turn it off and see how it goes and make sure that everything's in good shape there. The Dark Sky Initiative, we should be looking at the township and see what their ordinance is and see if it's something that we could look into as well. That's it.
Ross, your Gregory?
Ross? Yeah, thank you, Upper Spear Street. Speaking as a resident of Lower Spear Street, we do get along with each other, so. Thank you for being here. I had a conversation with Karen at a local establishment a couple of months ago about this. We had a lengthy conversation about it. I'm not going to get into the whole dark sky thing because I think that is a good conversation for the council to have from a larger policy standpoint. But today, I'm focused on the street light. And the fact that Consumers are Superintendent of Department of Public Works has ordered a shroud and has not been installed. I'm not prepared to make any changes to this light except install that shroud and let's see how it works. The reason I say that is because I have a street light in front of my house. Progression of events here is that when I was growing up here, there was literally an incandescent bulb hanging in the street. And it looks like Joe, Councilmember Clark, might remember those days. Didn't throw much light, more than what a hundred-watt light bulb could throw. That was since replaced by the sodium lights, which were on the, in my case, the south side of the street, right in front of my house. Two or four years ago, when the Verizon tripoles went in, the tripod went in where the street light was, and the street light was moved across the street and wasn't turned on. So I was like, oh, this is great. Because before, and it's still the case today, is that we had to put blackout curtains on our upper rooms to keep the light out from the new LED light, which is exactly the same as it is on Spear Street. So there's a point here is that finally some neighbor said, look, I don't like the dark street. It doesn't feel safe to me, and so I reported to consumers and it turns out that they didn't have an order to replace the light across the street. So now it shines not only in my house, but in my uncle's house across the street and the neighbor's house. And so we have the same issues down at Lower Spear that you're experiencing in Upper Spear. So where I'm going with this is I like to find a way that we could shroud the light on my street because it's causing the same problems. I'm not in support of removing it, but the larger point here is that there could be others in other areas of the, of the community that have some of the same concerns, and I think those should be addressed. Because there apparently are solutions to the problems, because the problem we have is the same problem that the Upper Spear Street folks have. So I, where I am on this is the larger conversation, yes, but today, since there's a solution that was identified to the problem and it hasn't been rectified, we should pursue that first. And see what this, and I'd love to see one on my street too, because it would help the problem on my street. And there may be others in the community experience the same thing. So that's kind of where I am on this. I'm not going to make a decision about where I think a light is appropriate or not. That's for others to make. But some of the points that were brought up in the memo, which was very well done in terms of, not that visitors are impacted or residents are impacted, but people that come in to provide services, this could very well cause a problem for them. And apparently, they didn't have problems over the course of how many years it was out. But that doesn't mean that it couldn't be a problem going forward. So I'm saying before I'm willing to take any action, let's get that shroud in to see how this works for the folks up there, and let's get one on my street too. So I'm going to put in a request for mine and maybe others. So that's where I am.
Gregory?
I pretty much heard everything already. Anything I say, would I be repeating what I've heard from several council folks already? But I will say one thing. The shopkeepers and several of the residents on the 300 block will take that light and put it on our block because it does get dark over there, and that's where commercial businesses and all that. So I am a fan of having low lights or, you know, not having light where it's needed. The less lights at night, the better. I, I like looking at stars myself as well. But yeah, I'd just be repeating what I've already heard, so I think I stand with where most everybody else does.
Well, I think, let's try to reach some consensus. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but I didn't hear anybody ask for a shroud. I, I've heard for shut it down or remove it. Are you okay with the shroud?
No, I'm not okay with it.
Okay. Right, okay. So I mean, what's before us is turn it off or remove it. I know these folks have been waiting for months and months and months to get resolution to this, so I'm prepared to vote on removing it or shutting it down on Monday.
I need, yeah, I mean, it seems like it's come before us. I, I will add to Chris's comment, because I had the same question Chris had about precedent. And how And how I can kind of work my brain with that is in, you know, they haven't had one in thirty years. So for them, it's really, you know, yeah, I, so I, I do, and which is hard for me to do because I really hate setting precedents. But given that they want what they've had instead of, you know, somebody else would be coming and having a light and saying they don't want it, which is a different situation.
I agree, and I agree with, um, Councilmember Stanton too. Let's look more at the bigger issue of the dark skies, which I first heard about from you when I sat in on the city council or the Parks and Public Works. And I think that's a, an awesome thing. Um, but I'd, I'd like to still leave it there because if the residents change or anything like that.
Absolutely. Yeah, I, I think we should.
Good to go with it.
Yeah, that makes sense. All right.
If I may, ma'am.
Yes.
We, shortly after this began, we already got another request for another street light removal over on Park Street. And, you know, this is kind of the game that I think staff doesn't want to get into. We'd really like to have this be a little more thought out in terms of what to do when we do receive these requests because they're likely to continue if we, if we start doing this. So. And I don't, you know, staff doesn't want to be in a position of picking and choosing, uh, you know, which the light appropriate is.
But I think that's why the larger discussion will help with that. I think their situation is so unique that, that we can see it one way, but, but I think there are other options available, especially having a gentleman that, uh, Councilmember Dean has talked about coming just with us. I think that's critical.
It was, his, his presentation was quite comprehensive and quite compelling. It really changed my thinking on this issue.
I lived, when I lived in Utah, I lived in a dark sky community. And, I mean, it was amazing because, I mean, you could see the Milky Way every night and.
It's just directional lighting. I mean, it's not that there's no lighting. It's just, it's just better lighting.
And so I think, yeah, I think it is worth the discussion. Um, we don't know, we would go as far as, you know.
I live in Nebraska, could always see the Milky Way. Nothing's stopping.
Yes, I mean, there are many places. Um, so, okay, well, we'll.
Just real quick, I might be a bigger fan of turning it off rather than removing it completely. Um, the reason being is it's five hundred dollars to remove it, costs nothing to turn it off.
I can, yeah, I can support going back to what the base case was, thirty years with a light that didn't work.
Right.
I, I could go back to that.
Can I get the shroud that you've ordered? Or not me personally, but can our street, I, I'm being serious.
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to check on the status with consumers and.
It'd be nice to see how it works.
Yeah, I'd be willing to be the test case.
All right. Right, shroud viewing at the gardener's. Um, love it. Stay tuned.
This is all by the black party.
Oh, even better.
We could do it at the wedding. Um, yeah, on, uh, sixty, just kidding, Laura.
Um, okay, uh, replication of the chain ferry arbors.
I may, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so chain ferry is in need of repair pretty badly. Uh, so we, we developed a plan, just how do we approach this? It's such an iconic piece to the city, you know, there's postcards of this thing. I don't have to go into the, the detail of how iconic this thing is. So, uh, we want to make sure that we do it really well thought out and carefully. And so we want to break this down into different phases. So basically phase one is already underway and it's been approved by the Historic District Commission, which is how do we make sure that this thing is safe and not for, for operation this summer? Um, so Public Works, we pulled the decking off of it, took a good look at the structure underneath. Identify that there were a couple of little key areas that could use some, some welding. Uh, so we performed that work and then we're in the process of pressure washing the decking right now. It's been replaced a couple of years ago, but we're pressure washing it and then applying a non-slip surface to it, uh, as requested by the operator, which is, um, the Star Sagatuck folks. So that, that gets us through, uh, for, for, for today. Um, and then bigger picture, that, that's when we start getting into phase two. Uh, phase two really is, is honing in on the, the arches for that, uh, the arbors. So, I, a couple of years ago, I reached out to some metal fabricators and I have had a, a heck of a time finding anyone that would just replace or replicate what's existing. But finally I was able to find one after, um, several attempts and that was with diversified welding out of Holland. Rich is the gentleman that came out. He came out, met with John Moxie and I, we took a good hard look at the structure. There's, there's really not a lot of complexity to it. It's a lot of angle iron, eighth inch angle iron that's welded together, kind of makes the structure itself. You know, the cedar shakes for the roofing, um, and then some pine, uh, wood boards for, uh, or, or the, the columns. So, given the simplicity of it, we asked him if he would give us a quote for just remaking what's there today. Um, so that's what he's done and that's, that's the quote that's in your packet. Um, he did add, uh, two thousand dollars in there for some of the repair work that I touched on earlier, but Public Works identified that we could do that work ourselves. So that's out of the equation at this point. Uh, but what is still on the table is, um, a proposal for seventeen thousand dollars to have both archers replicated, removed and reinstalled. Uh, there's two notable upgrades to, that we would want to do that are of very little visual appeal. The first would be, uh, at the base of the columns where they actually bolt into the concrete. It's very thin, eighth inch thick metal and you can see where that metal is tearing. Uh, and so it's not thick enough. So we we put in the quotes that reconstruct those columns with three sixteenths inch, uh, angle iron. And so that'll give it a little more thickness to it to, to be able to support the structures. Uh, and then the second component of it is to, if you walked up to it right now, you'd just see all the angle iron above with just rust everywhere. It would still be the same structure, just recoded with a, a marine grade epoxy coating, um, probably a darker color like black or gray or something like that. Um, but minus those two upgrades, that's, that's really what we would like to, but what we'd like to propose putting in front of you. That work would obviously be contingent on the Historic District Commission's approval. They haven't approved that, uh, that portion of the work yet. And then the third and final phrase would, phase would really be addressing those ramp structures. If you looked at it, you know, it, it kind of looks like maybe it was used with materials that were on hand at the time, um, by chance. And so we, we feel like, given, yes, uh, we feel like given, you know, the significance of this piece and how iconic it is, we, we think that it could, um, it's, it's more deserving of a, a better plan than that. So when the time comes, we'd like to have Fleece and Vanderbrink help us out with some design plans for it and just figure out better ways to make it, uh, more operational and practical. So, uh, with that being said, I like just open it up for discussion.
Yeah, questions?
Feel like you did your research. So thank you.
Chain, the chain ferry is a valuable asset to our tourism community and, uh, I think it's, uh, well worth it to keep it properly maintained and I appreciate the, uh, the time and thought that, uh, Scott, that you put into this.
Yeah, um, I'm in full support of the project. As I mentioned, when I was in Holmes Beach and went to a commission meeting because I'm a geek. The city attorney said Sagatuck, oh my God, I love the chain ferry. So it's got an international fame and it's, it's a, it, it's an incredible asset for the city. Having said that, does anybody, no one on this council is going to remember, but is there any Scott, if you had any, maybe Simonson might know. Is this it? Was that built by RJ or was that? What I'm, where I'm going with this is that that's not the original structure. So it's, not that it's, I don't want to call it historic in the sense that it's history of any kind, but is there a way to maybe make this a bit more? I don't know, more.
Like period correct?
Yeah, 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 thank you.
He heard this in the eighties, didn't he? When he replaced it, the seventies or eighties. I, I, I really don't.
Bruce might, maybe Bruce, but no, where I'm going with this is that if we're going to go through the point of actually removing and replacing what's there, like for like, the historic commission is not going to have any questions about that. But if we can get to something that might be a bit more in keeping with the history of it, I don't know if we can even get there. The other question I had was actual cedar shake roof, um, that's going to be replaced too, right? So that'll get the cedar shakes and and everything else. So anybody that's going to walk into town, when they walk up, they're going to be like, doesn't look, other than it looks better, they're not going to know.
There's some small like odds and ends on it. So like there's some brackets that hold the chain fair sign up. Those would get taken off and, and just, you know, if, if they need to get repainted or something like that, they would just get repainted.
Okay. Um, and the balustrades that are on either side on the east side of the chain fire, they're going to be repainted as not necessarily part of this project, but those probably could use a little bit of help too. At the same time, once, once this gets done. So I just put that out there. So I, I'm in support of this. I just think that we can find a way to maybe make it a little bit more period correct, if that's even possible. I'm not going to, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on that, but be curious to see what was there previously and it might've just been a rampant and no structure at all over. It could have very well been in the back of the day. So.
That's, I've seen pictures of what it was before it was replaced and it was basically just a platform.
Yeah.
Yeah, it didn't have the gingerbread, that kind of look that we have now.
Since we're talking about, I did, I did, I think it was a couple of years ago, I had a gentleman from Canada reach out to me and say, hey, I have a chain ferry. You do? Um, and he's like, I, I need to get some specs from you on the sprocket. Um, so he was asking for, he, he has a chain ferry on his farm. It's not used in the same way that we are. He kind of has a wide creek on his farm and he uses it to bring cattle back and forth across the creek. And so.
Love to see pictures of that.
It was kind of cool.
And what you need is just approval to put the other, this extra seventeen K in the budget that we're, we have to approve next month, correct?
Yeah, we, we are, we already.
Is it in there already?
It's in there already.
It's in there already.
We, we put twenty K in the budget last year, just thinking that we could get this kind of up and off.
Okay.
But like I said, it's been so difficult to find fabricators that can even, that will even do this work. Um, but it, it just took extra time. So fantastic. Good.
Okay, um, now, now Scott, the addendum to the trash services agreement.
Sure, yeah. Uh, we can go as far into this as you would like to go. Brunch a lot of numbers on this and I can tell you for sure, it's a better deal. So if, uh, I'm happy to go into it a little deeper if you'd like to, but, um, it seems like our municipal manager for Republic is willing to kind of, he reevaluated this and was able to put it under our, our single hauler, uh, waste service provider on, on the residential contract. And so with that pricing, we have more stability. Um, the, the biggest notable difference is the environmental and fuel fees. They're basically, um, dissolved. So, and we, we, we were able to, um, at work with legal and, and just kind of solidify some of the, the details of, of the agree, um, of the, the contract. So what our expectations are in terms of serviceability. So basically if Public Works calls, we expect it to be serviced within two days. If that's near a holiday weekend or if we call the day before a holiday weekend, you know, we're okay with three days. Um, but other than that, it's pretty straightforward.
I have a question, ma'am mayor. On page twenty, on the top of Oval Beach Services, it says contractor will deliver a two yard dumpster no later than seven days. And, and that's the hundred and eighty-five dollars per month. Is that just once or?
I'm glad you brought that up. I was going to mention that. So that's, I, I typed it up differently in the cover letter than it said in the agreement.
Okay.
Um, or in the addenda, draft addendum. So, um, what that is, is, um, for Oval Beach, it's a two yard dumpster. It's a hundred and eighty-five dollars per month, not, but it's serviced bi-weekly. So.
So it's dumped every bi-weekly, but we only get charged one eighty-five? That's not for every, every dump?
That's right. It's one eighty-five, um, flat rate.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, uh, Madam Mayor, this is a con, sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, uh, well, I'm, I'm I'm locking in on, on the, um, price increases. And, uh, CPI I can understand, but it says the greater of either CPI or four point five percent. So we're, the contract effectively allows them a minimum of a four, four point five percent annual increase. And that just sounds a little steep to me. I, I would, I don't know if we've talked with them or not, but it seems to me you flip it, right? CPI with a cap of four point five percent would be better for the city. I don't know if we can negotiate that, but. So. We, we know that. That's, that's just the only thing I caught. Otherwise I think it's a, you know, I think you did a good job, you know, working things out with them.
What we can do is reach out to Republic and this is just the draft version of it. So we can, we can revisit that with, with Republic and then whatever the details are of those discussions, we can bring back for you.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, we have the same four point five percent for the residential. So I'm sure they're just copying and figuring if we were okay with that, we'll be okay with this. But, um, I don't know, the negotiator in here just feels like it'd be nice to push back a little bit and see if we can't tone that down a little bit.
I think they, when we negotiated with the residential, they were saying that, um, they were trying to catch up. Because they hadn't charged, well, that's on them, you know? But, uh, but I agree. I'd like to, I'd like to see a four point five percent, uh, uh, limit or like a.
CPI up to four.
CPI up to four point five, yeah.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Anderson. Um, just help me understand, what do you think the financial impact of this is going to be? It's a positive, but do you have an idea what the financial impact is going to be for us?
Yeah, I did kind of a, just a rough number. The biggest impact is going to be for the regular trash dumpster at, at Public Works. Um, and so I, I did, I was able to run some of the numbers for that because I was curious about the same thing. And so, um, I got the average, uh, tonnage that we use and did kind of a cross comparison for what we currently have. And basically, what we, what we, what we have at the moment with, uh, air waste is a combination of a rental rate, a haul, uh, flat rate, disposal rate and fees. And then, um, the environmental and, um, fuel fees are, are at a, at a set percentage. And so, given the details of our average tonnage and what we're, what that current structure looks like, it looks like, you know, we'd be saving around maybe thirty-five hundred dollars a year just on the trash hauling services, but that's assuming that we're factoring in about maybe thirty or so dumpsters per year. And I, I don't know what that number is exactly off the top of my head, but that's just the calculation that I ran.
And that's with air waste?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, and, 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 um, that was my next question in terms of it's four hundred and eighty dollars per haul. So you said about thirty a year. And that, this is, I'm assuming this is when we have our junk pickup. That's where the junk goes and then it goes into that thirty yard and then.
That is separate.
That's separate.
Junk collection separate.
Okay. So you're saying we get about thirty, thirty of these a year roughly? Okay. And that's just city waste, right?
Yes. Yeah, that's, that's your street trash. So when the public works trucks are going around picking up trash on the, the road, uh, that, that's where that's going.
And but, I'm sorry, but you can call them really at any time and have them, or in a schedule, you just call them when it's needed.
Right.
Yeah.
And our, and our average tonnage is a little bit higher than average because we, we do pack the dumpster down with our backhoe, uh, and, and try to get some savings that way too.
All right, thank you.
Chris, did we want to, uh, get a bid with air waste too, or were they not interested in doing this?
The, the numbers, we've got pricing from air waste and this is the better of the deal.
All right. Anything else before we move on?
Okay, sixty, a special event request, uh, to close the street for a wedding on Main Street. I can see this up.
Thanks, Jamie. Okay, yeah, no problem. Um, so, uh, you heard from the applicant earlier, so I'm not going to dig too deep into it. I do apologize on the cover letter though. I did say Mason Street. It is Main Street. So I apologize for that. This is a special event policy. Um, I attached the, uh, the policy to the special event because a special event request is for, uh, private special event, which is typically not what we, we get for this. And so this is new to me. Um, so I want you to discuss and let me know if I need to move forward with the safety meeting and proceed with this application. Um, if you note in the definitions of the policy, wedding is mentioned. So, uh, just kind of look over the policy and I'll turn over to DPW Superintendent.
This one's a little unique. I mean, it's, it's a private event essentially. So, you know, there is definitely a concern on the staff end that this could also be precedent setting. Uh, so just be mindful of that. I think, you know, given the seasonality and all the parking concerns that we have, the special events that we have already, you know, there's a lot of utility work. There's a lot of disturbances to, um, to our, our local streets during the summertime anyway. Um, this, this is possibly just adding to that type of disruption. Not that we're one way or the other, we'll take direction, but, um, it is a little bit unusual being a private event.
Madam.
A question, would we need, um, would, would we need, um, uh, security or protection at these closures like we have to at events when we close off streets?
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, would we have to have fire trucks there or vehicles there? I would think so because we've moved towards that policy.
Yeah, it's similar to like this, um, Spear Street, um, event, then they do block off both sides of the street. So if this does move forward to a safety event, that'll be a discussion between fire police and DPW. Um, but with my history, that's probably what it would be similar to his event.
Yeah, what, and what we do for the Spear Street Black Party, which will be coming to the council here shortly, is we actually get city street closure signs, which the DPW staff is kind enough to drop off in cones. And then we, and then we put cards there for safety, just so hopefully prevent anybody from just driving through. So.
Chris? This is, this is another one that's, that's really tough. And, and again, I've looked at the precedent of this whole thing. Um, is the wedding, is, is the, is the person who's asking to have the wedding, is the wedding person a family member?
Um, it's.
Yes.
Hey Laura, can you answer the question if the wedding is a family member wedding?
Yes, it's my daughter.
Okay.
Yes, family member.
Elizabeth on, on the street.
On Main.
On Main. In, in from Elizabeth.
Okay. Again, going to a private, um, a. Um, again, going to a private, um, venue that is always an issue, um, in terms of just. Competition with people that actually do the venues, but, um, no driveways are being closed off. If I remember what you said, right? I mean, everybody's going to have access to their home if the street's blocked off.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And, and all the neighbors are invited. I'm hoping, or at least.
We have, we have like two neighbors on the block. So, and yes, they're all invited.
Okay.
Um, yes, and it's, um, yeah, it's a family member. It's a family wedding.
Those, those would be the only things I have going forward with this is that it would have to be a family member of whoever lives there and the driveways are not closed off. And all the neighbors are invited.
So Jamie, thank you for including the policy because, um, I know we, I think this came up. At some point, um, but actually weddings are included in the current policy. So, um, you know, at some point we. We might want to think of, I mean, from staff's perspective, it would be hard for me to turn it down. I mean, I get. It's a concern, but since it's in our policy, I think it would be hard to, um, turn down a wedding. But.
So.
That might be something we want to look at.
Yeah. And I'm just trying to remember, Jamie, maybe you remember if, um. I think there was a road closure before for a graduation open house.
It was the same, it's the same applicant.
Yeah.
It was in twenty twenty-one in June.
And we approved of that.
That was approved by council.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we have to just take, keep in mind that, um, our residents have a hard time in our neighborhood parking. And they're having a wedding in their backyard and it just seems like this is one of those things where it's a small street. It's away from downtown. You know, it's closer to the high school than it is downtown. I would be in favor of allowing this. That's just, that's my opinion. And I feel like, you know, we, we have a lot of sacrifices when it comes to parking. Uh, we don't have any, you know, it's usually filled up with, uh, you know, it's just packed in the summertime. And I just feel like, you know, they're just trying to have a family wedding in their backyard. And I would be in favor of it.
I, you know, I agree with what the mayor protest said and Helsmer Peterson's comments are spot on as well. You know, this is not a private kind of like, you know, we're coming to Sagatuck to hold a wedding. This is, this is a resident that could have easily, you know, very trans, I, I actually applaud Laura's transparency. They, you know, she could have come to us and said, we want to do what we did and have a block party.
Yeah.
Uh, we've invited all the neighbors and it's a block party, uh, which, but we just happen to have a wedding that, that morning or that afternoon. So I applaud her transparency. And so I, I think if we're going to allow block parties for our residents, I, I think if, if our residents want to have. You know, a block party associated with their wedding, you know, it's. You know, I mean, she could have just asked for a block party like Lower Spear and, you know, what would the precedent have been then? So, you know, I think, I think this is fine. But I, I do like the idea to make sure that we're clear that this was, it was something for, you know, a resident as opposed to someone like, you know.
Putting it on for someone else.
Precisely, you know, yeah.
Russ, did you?
Yeah, and this, uh, this is going to be a real ignorant question, but Mike is status is the applicant, but yet Laura's here.
They're married.
I, I. Like yesterday.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my husband.
Yeah, sorry about that, Laura. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
That's okay. It's our daughter. She actually live, she actually is residing in this home currently.
Okay.
Yeah, yes. And this is Sagatuck resident.
Is Jean-Luc getting married?
Uh, not yet, but he's got a serious girlfriend.
So thank you. I apologize. I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I think it's great. I think if we have, it's hard to distinguish between a block party and something like this. And if, and if we were to do so, I think we would, we should be looking at. Regulation and addressing it that way, not on a one-off situation.
I mean, I can see us revisiting this policy just so we're.
That, that's a plan of mine.
Yeah, we're clear. But yeah, I mean, we permit it. So it'd be kind of hard for us to say no. Um, oh. And this will be on the consent agenda or no, this will be a vote on Monday.
Uh, no, it will not be on Monday. I'll have to have the safety meeting first. You'll see it at a later date.
Great. Awesome. Thank you, Jamie. I appreciate the, um, the detail in there. That's very helpful. Okay, takes us to six East. Scott, back to you on front and loader replacement.
I'd like to just start by saying, just because Ryan or the city manager is not here, uh, that is not why. My timing is to put this in front of you now.
Yeah.
I, I wondered that, yeah.
He is aware.
Hijacking.
Fully aware of the spot. Uh, in all seriousness, you know, we, we have a nineteen ninety-nine, uh, CAT front end loader. Um, that thing has been at the garage for as long as I have been, which, um, and longer than anyone that's been at, at Public Works. Um, it's twenty-six years old, has over nine thousand hours on it. Um, and it's getting tired. It's, it's at a point where, you know, we got a quote from CAT to come down and, and service this and kind of go through the, the whole front end of this with. You know, new, new, um, you know, bushings and sprays and a, a variety of other parts that are wear items. Uh, and that quote came in at sixteen thousand dollars. So, um, it's an expensive piece of machinery, but it's absolutely vital to our operation. Uh, this is how we, you know, do brush and leaf collection at the moment. This is how, you know, we'd get the oval beach prepared for summer. Um, you know, it's just, we use this thing all the time. Um, so we really need to have it be as reliable as it possibly can be. So in preparation to, uh, ro- rotate it out, rotate it out of our fleet, we did demo a few different models, a CAT nine thirty-eight, just a direct replacement of what we got. Um, but we did opt for a model that has a quick attached front end, um, that would give us a little more modularity to it. And we think that, that there's, for example, there's an attachment called a tink attachment. Uh, we may possibly be able to look at buying a tink attachment and start doing brush and leaf collection, the way that the city of Osigo does, which is with one loader. And dump trucks followed behind it. Uh, we might be able to eliminate the backhoe, um, out of that service. So it's going to make us more efficient. Um. You know, there's a lot more, um, emission control, uh, equipment in, in, in modern tractors. It's significantly quieter. So our current one, I can hear that thing three blocks away coming down the road. The new ones, uh, are, are, are very quiet. Um, so we tried a CAT nine thirty-eight, a Volvo L ninety-H, and then a Hyundai HL nine forty. And, and staff overwhelmingly decided that the CAT was the better, uh, was the best option for us. Um, so we evaluated purchase versus, versus leasing options. Um, leasing is definitely not the way to go. Uh, this, uh, it would be best to do a, a. Just outright purchase, um, to procure best pricing. We did, this is an item listed in Michigan technical program. So, um, pricing came in, um, and it's the rock bottom best price for it. So. Just wanted to open it up for discussion, but this is a budgeted item. We have funding in our motor pool fund and we're prepared to, to rotate this out, but.
It's a quick one. Um, presumably this is compatible with all your existing attachments, correct?
It is.
Yeah, okay. Good.
Chris, a few quick questions. Um, I'm trying to remember with this, the, the piece that we're rotating out, that will go.
To auction.
To auction. And then this is, uh, we're buying it through the state.
Yeah, the, the state has a, a, a procurement program called Michigan My Deal, and that ensures that it's best contract pricing.
Glad you brought up the nine thirty-eight, uh, on page thirty-five. If you look, when we're talking about the maximum flow of the steering pump versus the maximum. I'm just making this up.
I was like.
Son, I know.
Sorry, that was good.
Nicely done. Nicely done.
You had me. I just want to know if I can write in it when we get it.
Did, did you ask about the older equipment or the, and that, so that would go to auction or?
Yeah, we just changed our, our, our purchasing policy. And within that policy, it, it, it addresses how we sell equipment.
Okay.
So this, um, you know, like every year there's, there's big municipal auctions. Midima is a, is a big name in the industry. Um, our front end loader would get advertised and promoted and sold at, at auction.
What do you think, do you estimate what you would get for it?
Probably.
Yeah, for any kind of ballpark.
Forty to sixty thousand dollars, I would say.
Okay.
Wow. Nice.
Good.
You should have come to us for a helicopter today.
I know. Really? Yeah. Yeah, anything else, Orion, Scott?
Where do we start?
Russ?
Yeah, ma'am mayor, thank you. Um, I'm supportive of the purchase. Uh, thank you for asking the question about the unit to be replaced. And, and obviously it's got some street value to it. I did a quick, uh, vers- courtesy of, uh, AI. A well-maintained front end loader typically has a service life of, of ten to fifteen years or approximately seven to fifteen thousand hours of operation. So we're at nine. So we're well with. Think we're in that range. And, and, and again, I, I expect our front end loader probably gets. A range of uses that a lot of front end loaders don't, right? Based on, you know, how we explain where to use it. Um, I'm, so I'm in support of it. The thing that, uh, two questions. One is what's the delivery timeline on this? Uh, is CAT sitting on a lot of units that we can get one immediately or?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer right now, but I will quickly find out, especially after this conversation.
Okay. Um, and something more on the fun side of this, um, and I've suggested this to, uh, Scott as well as Ryan. I think we should have some fun with our major pieces of equipment, our street cleaner, our snow plow, and now our front end loader. We should have a naming. Event with the kids at school. A lot of cities do this. It's not hard to do. And gosh, what a lot of fun that could be, right? And we could paint a nice name on them. I, that's something we should do because it's just, it, it's a way for us to engage our school. Many of our council members have talked about how important the school is to the community. Well, here's a way to engage with them on a real simple basis and put names on this and have some fun with it.
We have brought it over to a, a lot of our equipment, Douglas Public Works and Sagatuck Public Works. Um, we started. Going over to like Lakeside Learning Daycare Center over in Douglas with all of our fleet equipment and, and, um. We've had a lot of fun doing that. The, the kids absolutely love it.
Yeah, big tucks, big tucks.
Yeah, and it's in our best interest.
I feel like picture.
So let's have some fun with it. I think it's a, it's a great way to engage the community.
And if, if, if memory serves, uh, in terms of the service life, DPW's been very successful in exceeding service life intervals. If, if I remember the last plow truck that you switched out, you.
Yeah, we, we, we hang on to this stuff. So, um, you know, low front end loader, you know. Uh, our former treasurer used to, to dial in our, our fleet rotation schedule, which is something that I think Public Works is going to be taking a little more of a, uh. Proactive role in, um, but most, most municipalities seem like they're rotating this stuff out far beyond that. Um, and our nineteen ninety-nine front end loader is probably the oldest piece of equipment, but then we also have a, you know, three hundred thousand dollar Elgin Pelican Street Sweeper. Uh, which is a two thousand and ten, and that's, it's significantly, we've pushed the life out as far as it can possibly go.
Great. Any other questions?
It, it sounds like we're on board with getting this. Is, is this a two seater? Because I want to go for a ride. That's my.
Well, you can get the bucket.
Again, the bucket, yeah.
Pushing the bucket.
All right. Um, well, that's it for discussion items. Uh, public comments, like a public comment period is, uh. Has arrived. Anyone, Dan, would you like to come on up?
Yeah, this. Uh, again, Dan Sheridan, six, five, five spear. That's my first workshop meeting. I've been to a bunch of city council, but this, this is really interesting. It's, I'm. Happy to engage today. I just had three things I wanted to say based on the discussion that, that you folks had. Um. There was no survey. I heard Scott say, and essentially that's the way I knew it to be also. However, I did talk to Lynn Flowers, our neighbor that turned the light on. And I won't speak for her, as I mentioned. But what she told me to do was to tell you that she's okay with anything. She doesn't mind the streetlight being removed or turned off. However, I asked her to come and say that herself and she couldn't make it. She's raising her granddaughter.
Thank you.
It's difficult. Um, so I, I would encourage you to talk to Lynn, uh, firsthand. Uh, the other two things that are really interesting to me are, there is no disconnect switch on the pole for the streetlight. So if consumers quoted a cost to remove it, I would bet their cost to turn it off is the same. As a capital expenditure, because somebody's got to come out, they get to get on the lift, they got to go up there. It can't be that different. Um, the last thing is something that Jim Selma told me before he left and he, he was going to bring it up and, uh, he had to leave. But, uh, the consumer's technician that was out there, uh, previous time, I'm not sure which one. Told Jim that the city gets charged for, by the number of streetlights, whether it's on or off. And the fact that our streetlight was off for thirty years, the city was still getting charged. So if, if that's true, if you turn the light off, you're not saving any money on the operating budget.
Okay.
But if it's removed, you, you know, save a few bucks. But I wanted to bring those up.
Thanks for bringing that up, Dan.
Very interesting.
Uh, anyone on Zoom wish to speak? Okay. Uh, and Mark, you didn't want to speak, I'm assuming. All right, then, um, that closes public comments. Um, no correspondence. Council comments, Chris?
Glad to be back. Welcome back.
Russ?
No comments for the warm weather.
God.
Um, I'm just heading over to, uh, the wildlife committee meeting at six. So just flying that for anybody that's interested, uh, full committee meeting. That's excellent, right, Doug, Douglas, uh, Village Hall.
Gregory?
I want to wish all the moms out there a happy Mother's Day weekend. And don't forget to stop at Back to the Fuchsia Flower Shop. But we'll have our Mother's Day market out in the parking lot with potted flowers, fresh flower arrangements, herbs and vegetable starters. Uh, grown by Jean herself. So come say hi to us. I will be there. I have been there all week and will be there late nights making mothers happy. So come visit me at Back to the Fuchsia.
Thanks, Gregory. Joe?
I'm encouraged to, uh, continue the discussion around the street lights and the dark sky. I think that's, um. You know, a, a notable thing that we should take on. And, um, just from a personal perspective, I wish they'd take the light out across the street from my house and. Would love to one day be able to look out like I did as a kid and see stars up in the sky. Cause our whole family used to go out at night and just lay in the backyard. It was really something that we all treasured. So, um, that's just a personal thing. From a city perspective, I would like to make sure that we get that discussion going. Getting dark sky in here is a great way to start. So thank you, everyone.
Great. Uh, I think I really have a whole lot to say. Thank you, Scott, for filling in and. Getting all dressed up for us today, uh, and, uh, great packet for us. And, um, with that, is there a motion to adjourn? So move.
Second.
Uh, all in paper, say yes.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.